Well, it gives me great pleasure to introduce everyone here tonight. My name's Ali Borton, I'm the Chief Executive Officer with the Aretan Rural City Council. And it's my great pleasure to be here tonight to officiate. There's nothing more enjoying than being a part of the local government community, to be able to engage with the communities. And the sort of work that our volunteers do are the things that keep our communities alive. So I really do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to share some celebrations with you. In kicking off tonight's celebration, I'd just like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we're meeting today, in my respects, the elders, past and present, together with any emerging elders. National Volunteers Week is the annual celebration which acknowledges the generous contribution to our nation's volunteers, and more importantly, those that volunteer in our own communities. The theme for Volunteers Week in 2018 is "Give a Little, Change a Lot". This week, thousands of Australians will be celebrating and acknowledging the great work of people in the communities who give up their time and energy to make their communities a better place to live, work and play. So just as we're meeting tonight, there'll be gatherings all around Australia this week celebrating the terrific work that our volunteers do. Now, just before we get underway, I'd just like to share with you that apart from those of you in the room here tonight, this little camera here is beaming these celebrations live through the internet to anyone at home or anyone who may be wanting to watch. The council's been doing this with its council meetings now for the last couple of meetings, and it's really blown me away just how many people have taken an interest. So I just wanted to alert you to that fact that we will be recording this tonight and beaming it live on the internet. So if anyone would sooner not be on the internet, just tell me when you come up and I'll make sure to turn it off. But for those that aren't listening, why don't we do a great "Happy Volunteers Week" for everyone on the internet? On the count of three, one, two, three. Happy Volunteers Week! Excellent. Now, just to, I guess, give you an idea of what we might have done in the past, we're going to show you a very short video now, taking up last year's volunteer celebrations here in Aretat. So I'm just waiting on my technical staff now to find where that is. It only goes for two minutes, but it gives you a little taste of what we've done in the past.
When you're new to a community, it's joy and organisation, my project is to get to meet, you know, a broad variety of people. And, you know, when you're new, if you get involved, I think it makes you feel part of the community pretty quickly. Being a volunteer, it is rewarding and it's good fun.
I guess being a volunteer is one of those things that's easy to get into, but it's damn hard to get out of.
As parents, when we volunteer, your children come along, so it's about building that attitude within the next generation. So that, yep, mum and dad, they've always done it. So next time, it's about continually helping people grow.
Just touching on what everyone else has said, the award itself, it's about not the awards, it's about everyone else that chimes in and helps. Everyone in this room tonight, whoever's next year or whenever, who encourage one person to volunteer at their time, that'd be the biggest thing we could all do in the whole community, whether it's Moisten, Lora community, Aretan community, Wharrett forever. So I'd just encourage everyone to bring a friend along, it's still work in the village, do whatever, and we can all move right on. So, thank you.
Volunteering is such a fun, great thing to do because you're helping others and I thoroughly enjoy it. Thank you.
The rural city of Aretat is an incredibly special place, and one of the reasons it's such a special place is because of the effort of hundreds of people contributing, many, many thousands of their hours of time available, putting back into the activity of their choice. It makes us different to a lot of areas, and it makes us a very, very special place to live.
I'm sure there's a lot of things in that video that you can all relate to in terms of the benefits of volunteering and why, once you try it, you just can't leave it because it's such a compelling thing to do. But also, I'd like to acknowledge that the council's represented here tonight too by our Acting Mayor, councillor Wenda Allwood, and councillor Joe Armstrong. Thanks very much for joining us tonight. And it's now my pleasure to invite councillor Allwood to join me up here and say a few words to you.
Thanks very much, Ali. And I am pleased that Joe's coming up here to help me as well because that'll make the light a little lighter, and we're both getting the limelight next year, Joe. Tonight, we are recognising some of our wonderful volunteers across the municipality of Aretan Rural City. Volunteers from emergency services, sporting groups, non-profit groups and committed carers and mentors. We recognise those who care for community members as well as those volunteers who promote our wonderful tourist attractions. Throughout Aretan Rural City, our community members volunteer hundreds of hours per month, and we say a huge thank you to them. And I was listening to the news tonight, and it was made mention that right throughout Australia, volunteers save all communities billions of dollars with what they do. And if you think, look at all the people around here tonight, and most of them I do know, and I know how much they put in, and this is just a small sample of what we've got. Just remember, other years, we've recognised other volunteers as well, so it's wonderful that you've come tonight. Who volunteers? People from all walks of life volunteer to help communities' lighthouse come together and thrive. Statistics from 2017 shows that over 900,000 people volunteered in Victoria, 3.6 million Australia-wide. A short time ago, we invited people in the community to nominate someone they would like to receive recognition for their volunteer work. And as a result, we had 36 presentations to make tonight. We know there are a lot more, there are many more people in our community engaged in volunteering that are not present tonight. And I would like to acknowledge and thank them also for their contribution. If we brought them all into this room, we wouldn't be able to stand, which we'd be packed in like sardines, but that's just what Aretan people do. I would particularly like to thank the choir from Marion College, they were absolutely fantastic, for being here tonight on behalf of the Aretan Rural City Council, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. If you could just stand there, I could invite councillor Armstrong to join us up here. Yes, now we're going to present the certificates now. Turn that off.
So this isn't going to work unless we sort ourselves out, do you realise that?
Now, right on cue, Angela Hunter's joined me. Angela is our executive manager of Community Life and will be known to most of you, I'll imagine. But Angela's now going to read out the names of our award recipients this year with a bit of an overview of their volunteering work. And I'd invite those people to come up, and I'll be presenting with their certificate by our committee, and lapel badge by councillor Armstrong. Would you, Angela?
Okay, without further ado, our first recipient tonight, for their work with Friends of Gumsan, is Mary Schwenke. She has various activities to raise funds to replace the headstones for the 300-plus Chinese miners at the Aretan Cemetery. Mary volunteers at Gumsan, the Visitor Information Centre and the Memorial Aretan Lions Club. Thanks, Mary.
I have just been coming to, sorry, I've started it. I moved to Aretat eight years ago, and I've fitted in with the people in Aretat, and I work in Low Street, and I think I'm very happy here at the moment. Thank you.
Our next recipient tonight is Mr Reg Holmes-Brown. Reg is the treasurer for Friends of Jay Ward and a tour guide, which he feels with passion and efficiency. Reg's sense of humour and great storytelling is renowned, and Reggie carries with members and volunteers to join him. In the past, Reg has been involved in Aretan Men's Shed, Aretan Cycling, Aretan Basketball. He's known for watching the clock, but getting in and getting things done. Thanks, Reg.
Joe, if I could step in there? And can I just add something to that, Angela?
As we were walking with you, Reg said to me, "What's going on here? What am I doing?" Now you know, Reg, you're quite a man. Congratulations.
Our next recipient is Mr Tim Shay. Tim has spent years volunteering his time to grow junior sports in the community, from running oz kick for years to coaching Mounties in the under-13 competition, and currently coaching under-14 football. Tim has also been involved with the Aretan Pony Club, St Andrews Cricket Club, as junior basketball and soccer. Tim is a coach and mentor for our youth in sport. Tim says if everyone does their share, there is nothing to do but enjoy the kids playing sports. So he's been honoured tonight for his role in Aretan District Junior Football Association.
You've got a lot to say yesterday for the 40.
I'd just like to congratulate all the other nominees. As for me, volunteering with kids, and, you know, I love working with kids and sport, and so for the last 10 years, that's what I've been doing, from soccer to football. Pony club was a big thing. And as the kids move through, so do we, and we're slowly ticking off boxes, from junior sport up into the next level. And hopefully, we're producing kids that represent the town, not only in sport, but in everything else. And if they weren't to be volunteers like the rest of us do, well, you know, that's even better. So, thank you very much.
Our next nomination is for Mr Jan Walrath.
Willy Raza.
Willy Raza. He's nominated for his role with the Victorian State Emergency Service, Aretan Unit, CFA, the Aretan Brigade. And he's been an active member of the SES for over 10 years, since 2016. He's taken on the role of Deputy Controller Training and a vital member in keeping the local unit active and focused on the future. Thank you.
I thought you'd go down to Lucia when you went out the door there. Hello.
Oh, no, it's more like the UCF sort of thing, Art Boxing and stuff. Thanks for the nomination and all that sort of thing. But yeah, I've actually not prepared for all of this. Yeah, I'm just basically, you actually do really see the community in a different light when you sort of do volunteering. You see a different aspect of the community than what you normally see. So I'm actually quite happy to have done something like this, and being recognised is pretty good. Thanks, guys.
Our next nomination is John Rivet. John's been nominated for his work with the Elmhurst Mechanics Institute. He's been an integral part of the Hanks Institute Committee of Management for the past 33 and a half years. His first connection with the hall was being a builder's volunteer labourer when the new hall extensions were built in 1982. John has fulfilled many duties to maintain and preserve the condition of the local hall and surrounds. He's an integral part of the Elmhurst community and shows passion and commitment in everything he does. Thank you, John. Next, we have an award for Joy Gunston. Joy is with the Aretan District Banding Association and Alexandra Hall Committee of Management, Friends of Gumsan and the Aretan Retirement Village. Joy's provided many years of service to her committees and associations, from organising fundraising to providing fabulous baits, and taking bookings for Alexandra Hall. Her passion for the community is exemplary. Well done, Joy.
I'd just like to congratulate all the other people who are getting this certificate appreciation. And I've enjoyed my years of volunteering and all with the aged care section, the juniors, the seniors. And Aretan's a great place to live in, so I do hope we can get more volunteers, but I'm getting really old. And I'd just like to thank everyone and congratulate them. Thank you.
The next one we have is for Frances Kennedy. Frances is a volunteer at the Aretan Grandkids Visitor Information Centre. She's provided over 30 years of service to the Visitor Information Centre, just a fantastic effort. Thank you, Frances.
I'd just like to congratulate all the other people who have received and will be receiving the certificate appreciation tonight. And I must say that I have thoroughly enjoyed my 30 years working with Visitor Information Centre. I have seen so many people come and go, and I think that we can also learn, like us giving other people advice, we can also learn from them. Visitors coming in and they can tell us, you know, different other things that might help us along the way too, so.
The next recipient tonight is, I don't think in attendance, wasn't able to make it here, it's Ron McHulming. Ron's with the Rotary Club of Aretat. He's a member and past president of the Rotary Club. This year, he's worked hard to coordinate a district training assembly for over 250 Rotarians across Western Victoria. It was a hugely successful event. Thank you to Ron's coordination and a bit of time. So thanks, Ron. Next is Mr Dean Patterson. Dean's from Aretan Neighbourhood House. He volunteers on a daily basis coordinating, sorry, he volunteers on a daily basis coordinating volunteers and managing our Second Fight Food Connect Programme, and provides assistance to over 260 individuals on a weekly basis who are experiencing food insecurity, and provides nutritious and healthy food options. Thanks so much, Dean. The next one is also from Aretan Neighbourhood House, and it's Galen Baker. Galen is a volunteer in part of the Second Fight Food Connect Programme. Thank you, Galen.
When the call came out, the neighbourhood house, we had a previous manager who said that we'll join this Second Fight Food Connect program. It dropped out, I was the only one at that stage. Dean come along probably two or three days later. It's given me an insight onto how things are in some places in Aretan with the people that are really struggling. And it makes me feel good to see that they can come, get food and know that they are starting to get looked after a little bit. It's all free for them. And yes, I just, that was my insight to it all. I just enjoy joining it. Thank you.
The next group of awards are for a group of people who are all part of the LTP, Learner Driver Mentor Programme. The LTP programme relies solely on volunteers to keep the programme running. Without them, learner drivers would not have the opportunity to gain their required driving practice and obtain their probationary licence. The drivers cover various locations across the municipality to deliver this programme. All of us on the road, I'm sure, will really appreciate this programme in place, so we thank you all. The first one is Peter Bills.
I am going to say something. Peter's one of our councillors, so Joe and I, I'm not sure whether we're going to get a prize tonight, but maybe Peter got the only one that was going, but he does do a lot of work, and I know, do you know what I'd like to see? I would like to see Peter write a little bit of a history on some of the things that have happened to him during these driving construction courses with flat tyres. No, we're going to run in commentary, it's just wonderful. Well done, Peter.
And next is Dave Sanders.
The LTP programme is a programme that I came across probably five years ago. As some of you may know, I'm actually a volunteer fire glider. I originally started off as road accident rescue, seeing quite a few young people being killed on the road. And a part of my training as a CFA volunteer, I'm actually a driving instructor, to train people how to drive their fire trucks under lights and sirens and work with the police. What motivated me to actually take it up is I can spend an hour with one person that's giving them a life skill for the rest of their lives, just opening the door up to some of our young people who don't have an opportunity to actually be able to drive and drive with the right skills. I'm privileged tonight to actually have one of my mentors here, mentees here tonight that actually came along. But it's something that, it's a life skill that I spend an hour teaching somebody how to drive, they've got a lifetime. So something very small, and thank you to everybody else that assists.
I think we may have a few other recipients for LTP that are not here tonight, but I'll just call their names anyway. Gary Brumby, Kylie Bretherton, Lisa Waterman, Ross Healy, Shell Healy and Vance Bennington. Thank you to all of you for that work. Next recipient tonight, and there are two for the same activity, is for our Park Run. Ronald and Irene Kelly. They volunteer their time in setting up the Aretan Park Run course every Saturday, and I'm telling you, rain, hail and shine, we see them there doing that. It's a fantastic thing for our community, regardless of the weather, they're there doing it every Saturday morning. So for anyone who wants to get a bit active, eight o'clock Saturday mornings at the Gardens. Thank you so much. The next recipients are with the Moisten Willora Football League Club. First person I have here is Amanda Sobnik. Amanda's not here tonight. All the nominees have contributed in some way to the Moisten Willora Football League Club, be it a player, coach, supporter, fundraiser, committee member, or just lending a helping hand, they're all pitching in. I also have Kate Gleeson, who's not here tonight. Zanetta Hoski.
How embarrassing. Don't you remember, good. This girl plays in our league team with our granddaughter, and I watch her every week. When she came in and spoke tonight, I thought, "Oh, why would you do that? Because she eats down." Would you like to say something? Come on.
The next award is for Kate Pitcher. Kate's not here tonight, but it's being accepted by the DOLPO. Also from Western Willora Football Club, Ryan Dempsey. Sorry, I'm still here. Ewan Cluston.
Congratulations. We've got to get our photo taken, turn around.
Just want to congratulate all the other recipients for the awards they're receiving tonight. You don't do it to come to noughts like this, and most of us have probably got more than one or two committees that we sit on. But yeah, you do it because you're community minded, and yeah, you enjoy it when you do it.
We have a couple more from Western Willora Football Club that I don't believe are here tonight. One of them is Kevin Brady, also Mick Murray, Les Bright and John Vanderborgh. Thank you all. The next group of nominations are volunteers for the Alexandra Hall Committee of Management. Committee of Management have managed the operation of Alexandra Hall for 25 years. The hall is home for badminton, table tennis, canine obedience training, dancing dynamic, Tai Kwan Do, trash and treasure, plus many other community organisations on a casual basis. The committee's proud of its managers and health and safety record, does a fantastic job. We have four nominations. Three of those people aren't here tonight. We have Wayne Gason, Michael Egan, Heather Lachlan, and tonight who is here is Cat Leggett. We've just got two more awards tonight. Unfortunately, the people receiving these awards aren't able to attend, but we have someone... but we have somebody else receiving them for them. It's for their work with Lake Fines Committee of Management. Lake Fines obviously provides a service to everyone in our community as well as the region. Jim Legs and Gary Harthwaite. It's being accepted by Dean from Grantinsville, Ramada Water. Looks like Dean just found that out.
Now, you can take the pictures, but you have to walk out the night.
Thank you.
Turn around. I can't take it. So should I take it here?
Definitely. Do you want to see what they have? And thank you. That's the last of our awards tonight.
Well, thanks Angela for reading out those nominations and thank you very much to Acting Mayor councillor Allwood and councillor Armstrong for officiating. And as Acting Mayor just asked me if there was a prize for the barrel wheels, they had to wait. I think, I think we've heard from some of the responses of our recipients why people volunteer and the benefits they and their communities get out of it. So I don't need to restate any of those. But I know one of the eternal challenges of all organisations is succession planning and recruiting younger people to take over. And every group I talk to, you know, is concerned about the ageing of their membership. So I'd just like to share with you one of the things that we've done here at Araratno City in the short video we produced about recruiting new volunteers at our Visitor Information Centre, Gumsan and our Meals on Wheels service.
It might be a cliche, but it's actually true. Volunteers really are a lifeblood of our wider Ararat. With over 400 community and sporting events and an estimated 4,000-plus volunteers, there will be a group of quite many people sharing the same interests as you. Community volunteers are also a reflection of everything that is great about our wider Ararat region. Providing support to our valued scenes, guiding visitors to our diverse businesses and regional attractions, as well as helping tell the big story of our historic history. So we're inviting you to lend some of your spare time to becoming a council-trained and supported volunteer in three vital important areas. Meals on Wheels provides fresh cooked meals delivered to the door by a volunteer, helping the community to stay healthy and socially clean. As one of our premier attractions, volunteers tell the story of our Chinese heritage, guiding tour groups through the exhibition and helping care for the museum. At the frontline, our Visitor Information Centre volunteers provide a diverse range of information to the visiting public. This is local knowledge being delivered by local people, highlighting all the wonderful attractions, accommodation and dining options for our domestic and international visitors. The wider Ararat region is truly a connected community made very special by its volunteers. So if you have the interest and the time to become a volunteer in one of our part-hearted areas, click on the link below and we look forward to getting involved.
Thank you. And thank you to the staff for producing that video. It's terrific. Now, we're going to invite everyone up for a group photo at the end of the formalities. But before we do that, I'd just like to formally close the official part of this evening and thank everyone for coming along and sharing the celebrations of Volunteer Week. Anyone who's looking for recruitment information into any of the council volunteer services can do so on our website or through our customer service offices. And I guess anyone who's interested in the videos can talk to some of our staff about those as well. So just in formally closing, I'd like to particularly thank everyone who's been involved in organising tonight's event. I was able to thank the choir earlier, but thanks again to Marion College Choir. A big thank you to Sarah's Kitchen for providing the supper this evening. And I guess a particular thank you to councillors Allwood and Armstrong for assisting tonight with the recognition. And also to the many staff behind the scenes, Robert Hamley, Melissa Murdock, Angela Harton and Sam Shelders. To everyone else, thank you very much for the work you're doing in the community. Thank you very much for joining us tonight and sharing it this evening. And we look forward to seeing you at our next volunteer event. So thank you very much for coming. And before you dig off, I'd like all of our recipients to join up whereabouts, Sam, for the photo, or anything about that point. And we'll just get a quick group photo. But in the meantime, continue to enjoy supper and mingle and share your volunteering stories. Thank you very much.